Good evening. If you don't know where you are, you're at a city council meeting, and we appreciate, on a Wednesday night, you come in and spending the evening at a Willits City Council meeting. We're going to start with a pledge of allegiance, and our vice mayor turns 50 years old today. So, Vice Mayor is going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the five.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance by putting your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spoken like a 50-year-old.
Members of the members Burton, Gonzalez, Stransky, Alani, Almond.
Here. We are convening a Willits City Council. We had a special city council meeting, special meeting, at 6 o'clock tonight, and we met, and the direction was given to staff. So that is the minutes for the special meeting. So let's continue on with the agenda.
The city council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you're interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the city council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated, and the individual will be removed immediately.
Does somebody have a cellphone with music on?
Nope, it's in the hallway.
Okay. It's like Andy's singing Caravan. All right. All right, moving on. For public matters, we are going to have a second reading, and...
You might want to try...
Public comment for any... I'm sorry, thank you very much, Nicky. If there's anybody who would like to have any public comment on any item which is not on the agenda, you're welcome to join us, however, you're first, Nicky. And also, if there's anybody who has to get out of here, and there's an item on the agenda that you would like to speak about, because you have to get out of here, you're welcome to do it. So let's start with any item that's not on the agenda. Nicky.
Hello, my name is Nicole Copeland. I would like to do a couple comments for the article in the Willits Weekly by Verkhemirov, which seems to be attacking the finance director personally. If, and I don't know if he can comment on that, but I believe that he mentioned it multiple times that we had issues to the previous city manager and assistant city manager beginning of February of 2024, that the city was in trouble. He mentioned that the city could have cash flow problems, and also mentioned that the airport was in the red. The finance director and the city was flying in the dark with three different systems for a long time. So for him to say that he never said anything, and it was still healthy, healthy balance, and that he did not mention anything until June 11 council meeting was a little frustrating. Then the next item I have, it's a little bit concerning. One more concern that I have is involving citizens attending city council meetings. It was embarrassing and shocking to hear a city council member reply with, "Go home and watch it on TV," when two elderly citizens brought it to the city council's attention that they had a hard time hearing them. Not only is this clearly an ADA violation, ADA violation, but this is also rude, unprofessional, uncalled-for, and yells discrimination. All citizens should be welcome and have a chance to comment on items during the meetings and not be sent home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Hold on one second, Gary. This gentleman had his fine handle first. Go ahead, sir, in the back. Thank you. You're next, Gary.
All right, thank you. Fifty, huh? Getting old, eh? Getting old, eh, for sissies, kid.
What's up, sonny?
Good evening, council members and constituents. My name is Mark Wilson. I'm a business rep for the IBW Local 1245, representing many of the city's essential workers. These dedicated men and women ensure clean water, properly treated wastewater, and the maintenance of parks, streets, and other critical city infrastructure. Our contract expired on June 30, 2025. Bargaining began in May, but was unproductive during initial meetings with Chief Negotiator Patrick Clark. The council requested a 90-day pause, which we agreed to, ending on September 25, 2025. Since then, I was informed that Mr. Clark will not return as chief negotiator. I emailed the interim city manager on August 28 regarding the status of bargaining and received no response. A follow-up email on October 4 also went unanswered. I do, however, stipulate it's possible he may not have got it. I mean, spam folders, junk folders, may not have received them, so I'm not entirely sure. I urge the council to prioritize resuming negotiations with the IBW Local 1245 and to bargain in good faith. Thank you for your time, and I hope we can move forward promptly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you all.
Gary.
Dear Mayor, members of the city, Willits City Council, and employees of Willits. My name is Gary Martin, and I am on the City of Willits Art and Public Spaces Committee. Public art plays an essential role in shaping our identity and character of the community. It beautifies public spaces, fosters civic pride, supports local artists, and encourages cultural tourism. Moreover, public art reflects the values and history of a place, inspiring dialogue and connection among residents and visitors alike. The City of Willits has a unique opportunity to strengthen its sense of place through continued investment in public art initiatives. I would like to be placed on the agenda for a city council meeting to present a brief talk entitled "The State of Arts in Willits." This presentation will highlight recent accomplishments in the arts community, ongoing initiatives supported by the city, and plans for future public art projects. In addition, I would like to introduce a proposal for a new sculpture for the City of Willits, which will contribute to our growing collection of public artworks and enhance the cultural vitality of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary. I can't... You will get on the agenda, but I don't know the date. I'll get with you, and we'll figure out when we can do that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to talk about any item which is not on the agenda? Is there anybody who would like to speak about any agenda item that you'd have to get out of here in a hurry? Well, once going twice. Public expression is closed. Moving on to enactment of ordinances. We have a second reading and possible adoption of proposed revisions to the City of Willits Municipal Code, Chapter 2.40, Airport Section 2.40.030 and 2.40.040, entitled "Regulations to Use and Conduct Generally as Ordered by the Director of the FAA."
Honorable Mayor and council, community members, colleagues, hello and good evening. Ken O'Shea for the City of Willits, Municipal Airport Operations for Oster 28. I return here before you for the second reading of the previously discussed changes to the ordinance. Following the last regularly scheduled meeting held on September 24, the changes were posted for public notice in accordance with policy and law. I made myself the point of contact for anyone to bring their questions or concerns forward regarding this matter. Since that time, there has been no further correspondence from the public or stakeholders. Following the outcome of tonight's discussion, I will be reporting back to the FAA personally to provide a status update and have a conversation regarding the next steps to close this out. As ordered by the Director of the FAA in his letter of determination regarding the Part 16 Complaints of Middle, I'm asking that the council waive the second formal reading. Consider enacting this ordinance tonight, October 8, 2025.
Thank you very much, and we are going to waive the meeting. Do we need to do that by vote?
I make a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
We have a motion.
I second it.
Second. Public comments. Is there any public comment on the FAA new regulations for the City of Willits? Hearing none? Okay.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alani?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye. Okay, moving on to consent calendar.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks.
Consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar.
Okay. The City of Willits, the City Council considers matters listed in consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and roll call vote. A council member may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discretion as subsequent action. Following items are on the consent calendar. City council meeting minutes from September 24 for a special meeting and the regular meeting, and also, that's A as in Adam, B as in boy, is discussion and possible approval to extend for an additional month, the at-will employment agreement with Laco Associates for interim city manager services at a weekly rate of $3,600, and authorize the mayor to execute same. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Yes. And there's an empty chair up here. No worries. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Ragda Zakaria. I'd like to comment on item B. I think that decision to have LaFco as interim city manager is one of the best decisions you have made, but I have two points. You have a really business-like person running the city now, but you're not taking their advice of how to take, how to resolve our delinquency of the budget. I mean, two of them, they give you really good advice, but, I mean, I read on Facebook, I read, like, you're not taking their advice, and I hope you don't mind me saying that. Thirty, $3,600, I know you're worth it, but in our position right now, it's a little bit steep per week. I just want you to take that... You need to take their advice and look at the budget.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the consent calendar? Either item. Public comment is closed. To the council? Make a motion, and you have a second. To the clerk.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alani?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye. Okay, we have no monthly activity reports, and we have no commission or agency authority reports. Let's go directly to the city manager report recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I don't have a lot to report tonight. Focus has been on the budget issue and trying to resolve the serious deficit, and what is being envisioned as a reorganization of the city to meet the city's needs, something we've talked about at length. I can report that we will be bringing to the council in the very near future the elimination of the position of assistant city manager and the elimination of the position of project coordinator. We'll be bringing... Those are two of the positions off the top that will no longer be, will not be filled in the future, and that will not be part of the budget, and there will be cost savings to the general fund. We will quantify that. That, I think, is a small piece of this, and, but, that, those are the types of steps that are going to happen. First, addressing unfilled positions, and then looking at positions that are needed to meet the needs of the community. So that's the focus. And it's positions primarily with priorities on public safety and streets, maintenance, et cetera. So the, what we discussed at the last meeting, this is a complex situation that's going to require a lot of different, different changes for the city, and not just in staffing, but also in benefits and potentially in work weeks, et cetera. So trying to find the right mix of changes is the challenge. That's all I have.
Thanks. And the underlying situation is we're basically $2.5 million a year underwater. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
We're $2.5 million a year underwater. So to the community, we are striving, I know that I'm honest every day, striving to figure out a way to continue the operation of the City of Willits, as well as to, for lack of better words, right-size government to where we can live within our means. And that's where we are, and I appreciate the interim city manager and the work he's doing. All right. Any public comment on the city manager's report? Hearing none, public comments closed, and we're going to go to Department of, Department Recommendations, the first going to Dusty Dooley. Nine, A as in Adam, discussion and possible action on application for General Plan Amendment number GPA 22-01, and zone change number ZC 22-01 for San Hedren Timber Company LLC. Thank you, Dusty.
Dusty, before you start, I'm going to step down. I've got to declare a conflict interest on this item. I am a joining property owner to the project and also do business with San Hedren Timber Company through my business. So I'm instructed by the city manager that I not only have to step down, but leave the room, so I'll be down at John's place.
That's a long wait. No longer next door.
Save me a seat.
Yeah, I'm going to be stepping down also because I have a conflict. We are employed by the owner, so, Laco Associates on my other side.
Okay, to council. Councilman Gonzalez is absent tonight?
Yes.
And so now we have three out of five. We have a majority here, and...
Yes, the requirement to approve this proposed amendment of the general plan requires an affirmative vote of the majority of the body, so that's three affirmative votes.
Okay, so if we were to vote on, it would be, all three of us would have to vote one way or the other?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Dusty.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Dusty Dooley, your community development director. So what you have before you is a progress project request from the applicant, San Hedren Timber Company LLC, for a general plan amendment and zone change to change the existing land use and zoning designations of the approximately 19.05 acre site to industrial general and heavy industrial to facilitate the expansion of an existing log yard operation. The project sites located at the northern end of the City of Willits, near the northern Highway 101 interchange. You can see there's the two properties involved. The photo on the right shows the project site subject to the general plan amendment and rezone in relation to the existing log yard operation to the south, as well as Willits High School further to the south. Just very briefly, you have, I'm sure as Councilmember Stransky noticed, and other council members as well, you have a pretty hefty packet in front of you. The majority of that is the environmental review document that was completed pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. In this case, it was initial study mitigated NAGDEC to identify potential environmental impacts, and where necessary, proposed mitigation measures to reduce those potential impacts to less than significant. That document was prepared by Laco with concurrence from city staff, and the associated costs with that were passed on to the applicant. You also have a staff report summarizing the project and key issues identified in the initial study. You have the agenda summary that also includes the recommended actions or motions for council, and then should the council decide to approve the project, you have two resolutions. The first one you would pass would be certifying the environmental document, and then second, a resolution to approve the project. We did receive some comments on the project. There were several letters that council received in favor of the project, noting its local and regional benefits. You also had two letters from nearby residences that had concerns about the project, including the fact that some of them only received notice eight days before the project. I did talk with the city attorney earlier. Legal public notice has been established for the project, so council does have the opportunity to vote on this project tonight, if so desired.
Dusty, in that letter that we received, the two letters, they're both from the same address, different people, but they say that the letter was sent to them, it was postmarked September 18, but they didn't receive it until September 29. We don't send them certified or anything, we just send them regular.
Yeah, and so this, it may be that the mail's a little bit slower than usual, so I think staff made the note, I've made the note, that we'll try to get those out earlier because we do intend those to get to the actual recipient within 10 days, so we can start mailing out those a little bit earlier if it's taking longer for the mail to reach folks.
But they were mailed out within a time period?
They were mailed out more than 10 days before the public hearing.
Okay.
I interpret the code section as required for that.
Okay, thank you.
So the city can apply.
Okay.
So moving through the PowerPoint here, just a little bit of property background information. Both of these parcels, 1080411 and 18, have been undeveloped for some time. Parcel 11 was formerly the Quail Meadows Campground, and that operation ceased sometime around 2010. I've got a few different dates ranging from about 2009 to 2012. And then parcel 18 to the north has remained undeveloped. I'm not aware of any past developments on that property. There have been previous applications to develop these sites. We processed a minor subdivision on parcel 18 to create two parcels. That was approved. However, the applicant didn't complete the conditions of approval, and that project was voided.
Different applicant?
Different applicant, yep. Also, a different applicant proposed a use permit to allow the construction of multiple apartment buildings, never was able to complete the CECL process, and that application was On parcel 11, the former Quail Meadows property, different applicant proposed a zone change to go from commercial to residential to support a 45-lot subdivision. Again, CECL was not completed, and the applicant, application was withdrawn. Getting to relevant to this applicant, they went through the pre-application process and then submitted an original zone change and general plan amendment for just the Quail Meadows property. That project was withdrawn and then resubmitted with the two properties that are subject to today's hearing. Here you have a slide showing the existing and proposed general plan designations, so you can see the properties to the west, within the city limits, maintain the commercial zoning. The properties to the south are primarily industrial, including the location of the existing log yard, and then you have a handful of residential zone, residential designated properties where you do have single-family homes in the vicinity of the project site. And then on the right, you can see that the applicant's proposing to go from commercial to heavy industrial. I do, I will note that there's a 2.2-acre site along the northwest corner of the property that will remain in the commercial zoning and is not subject to the rezone tonight. And that's how we arrive at the 19.05 acres for the rezon application. Corresponding zoning essentially showing the same thing, the existing commercial designation and the proposal to go to heavy industrial.
Could you speak up, please, for the last sentence you just said?
Yeah, thank you for letting me know that. I'll do that.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, and then just keep reminding me if I...
No problem.
Yeah, awesome. I'll try to turn a little bit, too, and project back a little bit. So the, again, the applicant's looking to expand the existing log yard operation by 19.05 acres, and will be maintaining the 2.2 acres for future commercial use. This is, I would call it a conceptual plan that the applicant's provided. Certainly, this can change based on looking to avoid some of the environmental resources that are on the site, or any other reasons, but conceptually, they're looking at expanding the operation to include 12 new log decks, two new storage ponds to serve both their own irrigation needs for the log yard deck, as well as potentially fire suppression needs, three new, potentially three new fire hydrants, four new water tanks, upgrade, maintain, construct onsite access roads. There's extensive tree removal and grading that's required, and then looking to demolish an existing 18-unit self-storage structure and tennis courts that I believe were left from the previous Quail Meadows operation, and then possibly relocate the mobile fuel So this, the environmental analysis didn't just look at the prospective log yard operation that would, that would be allowed under use group 34 into the heavy industrial zone, but rather looked at all of the potential uses that could occur as it permitted by right in the heavy industrial zone. What you're seeing here is a list from our zoning code of the permitted uses within the heavy industrial compared to the existing community commercial zone. One of the properties also has the C2 zone, which allows for a little bit more intensive commercial uses, and I failed to put that up on the slide, but I believe it is included in the initial study. So just to note that, you know, there's other manufacturing uses, other types of industrial uses that can cause odors, noise, heavy traffic, et cetera, that would go along with that new use group. And I'll talk a little bit more to what that process would look like if different uses came on that property other than a log yard. I'll get that in the presentation here shortly. Here we go. So, and also just to speak a little bit more about the daily operations, pulling out of the initial study, daily operations of the project would be consistent with the existing operations of the existing log yard, and would include the storage and sale of non-retail logs, log and lumber trucks transferring logs to and from the site, log cleanup, including periodic chainsaw work to logs to cut into shorter lengths, flush knots, and cleanup and flush the ends of logs to remove unevenness, splinters, or other log defects, loading of bark and other byproducts using heavy equipment, lumber trailer staging, and site maintenance, including minor grading, resurfacing, and watering using heavy equipment. So some of the key issues that came up in reviewing this project, one of the big ones is fire protection services. We currently don't have adequate fire protection infrastructure on this site. Certainly, the log yard presents a prospective fire hazard. We do have Little Lake Fire District Chief here with us tonight, and certainly is available to help answer any questions, but what we're going to expect from the applicant, should the log yard expansion move forward, is that they provide adequate water and fire flow or pressure, so that, to the satisfaction of the Little Lake Fire Department. So should a fire break out, we've had fires there in the past where bark piles were engaged, and the fire departments had to go out there and battle those blazes before. So understandably, I would think staff's asking for a bark management plan, so to ensure that conditions don't arise where those bark piles catch on fire from the anaerobic conditions and the heat that can cause from the decomposing bark. Certainly, maintain emergency access, so if fire vehicles need to access the site, they can get to anywhere they need to in order to battle a blaze, and then just overall compliance with fire code. And that's not a, and that's a lot, in order to get, that's a big investment by the applicant to set up that fire protection services, and hopefully would be a benefit to the other properties in the area as well. There was biological studies completed for the project that identified a number of special... There was biological studies completed for the project that identified a number of special status plant and animal species habitat. That's outlined and mapped in the initial study. There's removal of 160 mature trees. You have eight mitigation measures identified in the report. Essentially, the applicant's going to have to get permits from the Water Board and the Department of Fish and Wildlife, possibly Army Corps, and to mitigate any impact that the project may have on, on those protected resources. I think that the plan's going to be for the applicant to avoid or minimize those impacts as a result of the project, but where impacts do occur, they're going to be working with those agencies to identify areas for onsite mitigation where they'll be replanting or re-establishing those same communities that were impacted. And if onsite mitigation's not feasible, then those agencies are going to look at the applicant to identify offsite mitigation lands. And so that's outlined in, in more detail within the initial study. So we, staff took the unusual step of, of bringing this request forward as an informational item some time ago, and it was just an opportunity to get some general concerns or thoughts from the, from the council. And one of the main concerns we heard was the amount of water use that this project presents. So according to the applicant, the estimated water usage for the expansion, I don't believe this includes the water use for the existing log yard operation, is about 13.5 million gallons per year, or 41.5 acre feet, which is equivalent to about the use of 210 single-family homes. So the council noted the interest in the applicant seeking wells or otherwise finding water sources to support their, their operational needs. So the applicant really didn't push back on that. They have been diligent, working to establish wells. They have established some wells, I believe, and maybe looking to establish more as needed so that they can feel confident that they're not going to need to rely on the city's limited water connections available to support the project. And, and again, I'll just note that we, the city is under a state permit and can only issue so many water allocations, and so if this project is able to offset their own water use, it, it leaves that water, those water connections available to support other residential, commercial, or job growth developments that the city may want to otherwise support. And, and this would be good clarification, at least for, for myself. In, in going through that informational session with council, it, it was clear that the council was, at the time, was interested in them supplying water for their own operational needs, but when it came to fire suppression, it wasn't clear that, you know, the, the city may very well be, be happy to allow use of city municipal water services to, to fight a fire. So maybe that clarity could, could come forward as part of this hearing as well. The applicant does have an existing water connection for the benefit of the existing office that's onsite there, which is very minimal use. And I apologize, I don't have a slide for it, but I, I, you know, again, with, with rezoning to any type of industrial use, you're increasing the opportunity for impacts to the neighborhood related to such things as odor, odor or noise. And so that, that's a key issue that was addressed in the initial study, too. So staff's recommendation, again, is to adopt first the resolution certifying the initial study, the environmental document, and as well as the mitigation monitoring reporting plan. Those are your, essentially your mitigation measures. And then if council wants to approve the project, adopt their resolution that's set up for, for the project there. I, I do want to note that should this project move forward, the next steps are for the applicant to go through what's, what's the city has as the site plan review process, and this is an opportunity for city staff to not only look at this individual project, but look at any other future industrial projects that are permitted by right in the zoning, and establish conditions or measures to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. So I'll, just to, just to try to confuse council and the audience for a second, with rezones, you really can't condition rezones, and so the way that we apply those mitigation measures actually through our site plan review process. And I'll, I'll let you know, and I, I believe that the applicant's been briefed at this, or at least the, the agent has, we're also going to be looking to add additional conditions related to tracking dust out onto the roadways, including by the high school. I'm aware that there's been some complaints from the school about the dust getting into the pool filter system and causing issue. And, and, you know, I'm also aware that there's concern about the heavy trucks going through our main street downtown. I don't believe they really need to, but we can craft a condition to ensure that that's, doesn't happen, or, or only happens on, on some very limited basis. But primarily, the trucks are going to be going to the Northern Interchange and taking the, the highway north or south. But again, those maybe a little bit less minor conditions can be placed on the projects through the site plan review. That happens at the administrative level, and if the applicant or neighbors are dissatisfied with the conditions that are placed on that, that can be appealed to the, to the council.
Okay.
Yep. And then, again, the applicant's going to have quite a bit of work developing the site improvements, including the water and, and fire suppression infrastructure, and then, you know, state agency permit compliance is less than easy at times, too. So those are things that are going to need to take place and occur before the log yard expansion can occur. And that concludes staff's presentation. I will note that the applicant is here, as well as their agent and, and the fire department, so they may want to speak to council as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for a very detailed report. I know this is, several people are here to express opinion on this. We have several letters, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to say who the letter's from, and if it's supportive or opposition. And what I'm, the reason I'm doing that is for the sake of time. If you're here and you wrote a letter, your letter has been reviewed by the council members. If you want to speak, no one's going to forbid you from speaking again, but if you want to just let your letter speak for itself, you have that ability, okay? So the first being Round Valley Indian Tribe, Tony Whipple, the natural resource manager, wrote a very strong letter of support for this project. Peter Bradford from the Bradford Ranch LLC in Booneville wrote a letter of support for this. Anderson Valley, or Anderson Blogging, both signed by Mike Anderson and Miles Anderson, wrote a letter of support for this project. Redwood Empire, signed by Jesse Weaver, resource manager, wrote a letter of support for this project. Tony Therace, a local land broker, wrote a letter of support for this project, signed by Tony and his wife. Willala Redwood Timber, signed by fourth manager John Bennett, wrote a letter of support for this project. Padula Lumber Incorporated, signed by Nancy Coffin, wrote a letter of support for this project. The Conservation Fund, signed by the timberland manager for Mendocino and Sonoma County, registered forester Scott Kelly, wrote a letter of support for this project. Redwood Timber Company, signed by Zachary Jones, the general manager, registered forester, sent a letter of support for this project. Christina and Adam Lawrence, local landowners and private timberland owners, wrote a letter of support for this project. North Coast Resource Management, signed by Todd McMahon, the vice president, wrote a letter of support for this project. Lillati Timber, signed by Brian Hurt, wrote a letter of support for this project. Those were our letters of, that we received specifically either opposing or supporting the project. We have two letters.
Excuse me, mayor, I believe there was one other one from Mary Ellen Shepherd, who was also in support.
Thank you very much. Mary Ellen Shepherd from Fort Bragg wrote a letter of support for this project. Thank you very much. Do you know if there's any more that I haven't, other than the two that I'm going to talk about?
Those are all the ones that came in before the city council meeting.
Okay. I have a letter from David Schmidt, dated September 30th, that neither opposes or supports the project, but states that the notice was to him, he's a nearby, he lives near the project, was mailed September 18th. He says he didn't receive it until September 29th, which is only eight days prior to the council meeting, and he is asking for a postponement of tonight's hearing. And a letter from Julia Moon Sparrow, the same address, basically, it's a five-page letter laying out neither opposing or supporting, but stating reasons why this project should be examined closer, and also asking for an extension of the decision tonight. So we're going to open up the public comment, and you're limited to three minutes. The podium, please state your name, and you are welcome to state your opinion. Nikki.
Hi, my name is Nicole Caldwell. I got a couple of questions about that. So 13.5 million gallons a year, that's a lot.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
13.5 million gallons of water a year, that's a lot. 210 single-family homes, how many single-family homes do we have in Willets? Again, this is a lot of water. The quest, the concerns that I have is about the wells. So it was said that they are four existing already and planning on two and three more. Hasn't the previous council not raised concern about existing wells and their impact on the groundwater? I'm a little concerned if we add more wells, at some point, it's going to affect more than just surrounding people, it could affect us all of Willets. And if we supply the water, where do we get the water from? I was here during the drought, as many of you probably were. We run the groundwater plant as a supplement for the water plant up there. This is a lot of water, and I do personally, personally, nothing that the city can't afford giving any water to them. And then the other thing is, didn't we just deny somebody that wanted to put a housing area together because we weren't quite sure if we could supply them with water? So, I mean, there is, there is definitely, and I agree with, we probably should extend or look really, really deeper into this project. Thank you.
Who else would like?
Evening, council. I am Addison Lawrence, and I am the next generation of timberland managers. I spoke on this same matter a couple of years back. I was 12 then, and I will soon be 15. I'm a Willetts High School student and enjoy spending my free time watching the logs be trucked in while knowing the hard work and long hours it takes to create a product everyone benefits from. I speak on behalf of Willetts youth when I state that expanding North Fork Lumber Company's local reloading yard would and will be beneficial in all aspects. To put things into perspective, in 1980, Mendocino County harvested 343 million board feet of timber. In 1990, that number was 423 million, but by 2023, it had dropped to just 107 million. This sharp decline is not due to a lack of trees, but to a lack of infrastructure. Jackson State Demonstration Forest is mere 5% of the timber acreage in Mendocino County and annually grows 50 million board feet. The California Forestry Association has stated that the timber industry supports over 325,000 jobs statewide. Timber is one of the few natural resources Mendocino County relies on. Due to a rapid timber growth in Mendocino County, infrastructure is essential for effective forest management in both commercial and private sectors. We currently harvest only a small percentage of our county's growth, meaning that our forests are overgrown and stagnant. I respect the fear of fire that comes with log decks, but look to the hills surrounding our town. The stand of dry, dying timber is worrisome. By managing forests, wildlife populations rise and younger trees thrive more rapidly. Unmanaged forests increase the risk of wildfires, putting all of Willets in serious danger. Locally, in the last 75 years, two log deck fires were reported, neither burned a single log. Locally, or last year alone, six wildfires destroyed three homes and took one life. Sustainability, providing for our families, and using the renewable resources provided to us by this land, there's not a single negative attribute. University studies prove that for every million board feet of timber harvested, the industry supports 11 full-time jobs. Expanding the log yard could increase the job force by hundreds, positively impacting hardworking families such as mine. Mendocino County is one of the top timber-producing counties in the state, with timber being the second highest agricultural product of the county. With all this positivity, it shocks me that two years have been spent on this matter. As Mr. Burton once said at the last meeting I attended, "These kind of quality applicants don't come along every day, and they do have other options." With the decision this company has proven, or with the dedication this company has proven, Willets should truly be proud to accept their expansion. I fully support North Fork Lumber Company. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Addison. Who else would like to speak, please?
Good evening, Mayor Allman, council member, city staff, Adam Gasko, executive director of Mendocino County Farm Bureau. I'm here tonight to speak in support of San Hedren Timber Company's application for a zoning change and general plan amendment. This proposed zoning change and general plan amendment is essential in supporting small businesses, living wage jobs, and sustainable forest management in and around the city of Willets. San Hedren Timber's existing log reload yard has provided a reliable market for logs since 2017. This facility has enabled sizable growth in the private, in the private forest sector, which has provided and sustained numerous living wage jobs for residents of Willets and Mendocino County. Approval of the zoning change will provide further stability and growth, job, job growth opportunities. This outlet for forest products provides a market-driven approach to support foresting fuels, reductions, and other sustainable forest practices. San Hedren Timber is certified by the Forest Stewardship Council, which ensures that their forest products are sourced from responsibly managed forests that provide environmental, social, and economic benefits. The increased competition in the local log market provides market competition for delivered log pricing, which has benefited small and large landowners that depend on revenue from timber management projects. The proposed zoning change will help sustain the current market and provide opportunities for increased market share. The current Willetts log yard capacity cannot adequately provide outlets for all the landowners that wish to sell their logs. Approval would allow an increased capacity, which would enable additional landowners opportunities to sell timber from their projects. This would allow for increased opportunities to market timber from foresting operations, forest fire prevention and structural protection exemptions, fuel break projects, and reactive post-fire emergency harvests to capture mortality following wildfire. The owners of San Hedren Timber have repeatedly proven their commitment to local communities in providing sustainable forest product market outlets and a reliable economic foundation for rural communities with Humboldt and Trinity Counties, where their main operations have been in business for over 50 years. Approval of the rezon will allow the same opportunities for the city of Willets and Mendocino County. Again, I want to reiterate Farm Bureau's support of San Hedren Timber's application for zoning change and general plan amendment to facilitate expanding their current log yard operations and urge the city council member to vote in favor. By voting to approve this change, this land will be utilized in a manner that supports local jobs, industry, community, and sustainable forest management in Willets and Mendocino County. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak with any, on either side of this? By all means.
This is actually a declaration from David Schwent to you all. So I understand. Thank you. Thanks. Good evening. My name is Julia Moon Sparrow. I live next to the existing log yard, and I strongly oppose this project. I wanted to clarify that. David Schwent also strongly opposes this project, as well as many other people that I'm representing, because we didn't have enough time. Just got the notice eight days ago, so request for an extension of time is the number one priority to get across, that it's really crucial to be able to allow adequate information to... to allow adequate information to be shared. We reiterate our request to delay consideration of the above-referenced agenda items until the next council meeting. The submitted documents supporting this application exceed 400 pages, as you probably know. The applicant has been working on this application for more than four years. Eight days is not enough time for us to be able to respond. We have been given only eight days prior to the city council meeting to actually study all these documents, research the findings of the various consultants who contributed to the application, identify affected parties, organize public outreach, and finally prepare a comprehensive response to this application. Eight days is clearly insufficient time for us to be able to accomplish these activities and thereby denies us the right to effectively oppose this application. We therefore request that the council approve the extension of time. I apologize, I have to speak fast. I want to be as clear as possible while also being able to accomplish what I'm attempting to accomplish in the brief amount of time that I have to do it. By the way, it's a statewide concern of not enough time, I just wanted to mention that. The legislature finds and declares that ensuring sufficient notice of zoning ordinance changes that could affect property rights is a matter of statewide concern, and it's not a municipal affair, as that term is used in Section 5 of the California Constitution. Therefore, Section 1 of this act applies to all cities, including charter cities. 20 days is what this is talking about, 20 days before notice, before the hearing. Even 20 days would be insufficient, especially in comparison of four years. Both of the subject properties that you saw on that really nicely laid-out visual are C1 and C2 zoned by the general plan, both of this, which conditionally permit multifamily housing.
Your three minutes is on, however, because you're opposing it, you can have an additional two minutes, okay?
Thank you. It is clear that the subject properties are presently zoned in accordance with the adopted 2021 city council goals. It is equally clear that the general plan amendment and related industrial zoning proposed by the applicant are not in accordance with the adopted 2021 city council goals. Because the application would remove housing opportunity sites, since industrial zoning does not allow any housing, it would turn it into a destruction. As you saw on the images, the image to the right, the existing log yard is denuded completely. It looks like a moonscape. Everything else adjacent to it would become that. This project will have a negative impact on the natural environment. In this case, the protected wetlands of Little Lake Valley, including the parcels of this project. Any project which has even a potential to harm the national environment, especially the protected wetlands of Little Lake Valley, is required by SEQA to be reviewed. SEQA would also include a rezon as a project. I'm going to skip the rest of this. Oh, by the way, 40% of industrial zone properties in Willets are not being used, so we're requesting an extension of time to be able to look further into this. Also, the wetland destruction on the property and off of the property affecting wetlands, the wetland destruction on the property, the affected area affected by the proposal contains substantial amounts of wetlands. The amount of wetlands claimed by the applicant is less than one acre, which conflicts with prior wetland assessments that indicated four to five acres of wetlands on these parcels alone. Because of this conflicting information regarding the extent of wetlands on the subject parcels and potential impacts to the Little Lake Valley wetlands, an additional wetland assessment needs to be prepared by an independent qualified engineering consultant. Tree destruction, 116 mature trees will be destroyed, air pollution, water pollution.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment on this? By all means.
Hello. I just have a question, Mr. Mayor. All the letters you have received agreeing with the project, are they outside Willets? What's their addresses? Are they outside Willets? Other towns?
No.
The ones?
Let us know when you're done.
Yeah, the approved letters.
Are you done with your comment?
Yes, one. I'd like to hear from the applicant.
You will. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this? Ellen.
My name is Ellen Drell. I also was taken by surprise by this project. I spent a certain amount of time studying the Willetts general plan amendment update that took place, I think it was just a year ago, and I don't recall any discussion about rezoning this property and creating a major heavy industrial site at that property, you know, squeezed between the Little Lake wetlands and the high school. I was somewhat involved with Rich Padula when he established a log deck there, and I was pretty neutral on it and could understand why having a log deck there was valuable, because it allowed logs to be stored there, and it made it easier and more economical for transporters of logs to have a place to unload logs and go back to a mill and then, or come up and pick logs up and take them to a market. So, that made sense. But I think that obviously, a lot of people from outside of Willets have known about this project for a long time, and it's very upsetting for people who live in Willets and care about housing and commercial property and industrial property and residential property and protecting wetlands and ecosystems and trees to find out about it only weeks before the council is deciding on it. So, I don't know why this project was buried, why it wasn't talked about in the general plan update, and I want to support the two speakers who asked for extension of discussion and examination of this project so that the residents of Willets, I realize some of these letters came from Willets or Willets area residents, but a lot of them did not. I think it's really important for the residents of Willets to have an opportunity to look at what's being proposed here. It looks like a major, major industrial site that will have a huge impact on the northern end of Willets. And I have to, and I just want to say again that in that general plan update, they indicated on the maps that of all the industrial properties zoned, heavy industrial properties zoned in Willets, 40% of them are vacant. So, to take a property that has wetlands on it, has over 100 trees on it, has residential properties on the periphery and the high school nearby, and the potential of increasing heavy industrial traffic right by the high school, is this really a place where Willets wants a major industrial project to take place? There are other places in Willets that are more set up for it. And I, so I think it, I think it requires more examination, and I urge you to postpone this, not necessarily to shovel it all together, to postpone it, so that the people of Willets can be aware of what's going on and weigh in on it.
Mr. Drell, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
I'm Dennis McFarland. My wife and I own McFarland Trucking, longtime resident of Willets, I think 37 years. We heartily approve of this expansion of North Fork Lumber. We do, our business is log trucks, and our trucks go into that yard a lot, and I think it's going to be good for our city, and I think it's good for our timber industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this project? Kevin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Kevin Dobell. I'm a project manager and regional manager for Lakos Associates. We've been working with the applicants for the last several years, working on technical documents, evaluating the analyses that were provided in the SEQA document. I wanted to, normally we have a chance to make a brief presentation, so I'd like to do that just in a couple of minutes here. I also have the applicants here who would also like to speak, if we may. I just wanted to say that this project has been reviewed multiple times. There have been multiple studies that have been prepared over the last three years on this project. They've been not only reviewed by us, but also by the city staff. They're prepared by technical experts. As it relates to water, one of the main issues that we heard when we came to the council in 2022, February of 2022, was the concern about water and asking us to be, or the applicants to be creative about how to minimize impacts on the city's water system for this project. We sat down, we really thought about that. We came up with an idea to create large ponds. These ponds will hold water. That water will be recirculated and recaptured, and it will be used to continuously sprinkle the log decks. I believe that San Hedren is committed to not using water from the city system at all in this project. They have an existing operation. They know exactly how much water they use. Roughly less than 1% has ever been used from the city system on that particular existing operation. It's a tremendous amount of expense. It does take up land and space to create these reservoirs, but we believe that's the appropriate way to go. We look forward to working with the fire district to make sure we're securing the appropriate calculations, studies, and best management practices that need to be put in place so that if there were an event, it would be able to be handled effectively. And I would just reiterate, the SEQA process was followed specifically, and there are extensive studies in the mitigated negative declaration that's before you tonight. I would also ask if there are any questions from the council. As you carefully consider this, we're available to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any applicant would like to?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Dee Sanders. I'm vice president of the Schmidt Bar family sawmill operations. We have three sawmills in the North State, one power plant in Anderson, California, that's Wood Fire Power Plant, and a sawmill in Weaverville, California, a sawmill in Blue Lake, California, and a sawmill in Eureka, California. Those sawmills have been, the two of them have been existing for many years. North Fork's been in existence the last eight years or so, which was the old original Simpson Mill that we took over and remodeled and put back into production. We have log yards operating at several locations around Northern California to be able to apply logs to our mills, and all of them run two shifts and employ probably about, between the three sawmills and the power plant, around 450 people to 500. We have been, we have, our owners are longstanding members of the timber industry and of the North State, originally from Willets. I was hired here in Willets many, many years ago when I was in college. At that time, there was a lot of mills in Mendocino County, not so many today. I want to remind you, we do not have sawmills so we can manage timber. We manage timber to support sawmills. But without those sawmills and no management, our resources go to pot, not just timber, fish, water, wildlife, you name it, recreation. Look at the national forest. It's a sorry excuse for what we did to our public ground. I would like our timber manager for North Fork to come and speak just briefly, and also Victor Hollister. This is Russ Dorval, Timber Manager of North Fork. Victor's our local RPF and manages the log yard. And just quickly, give you a little bit of information about the importance of the ability to have local timber growers to sell to a local market.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dee. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Russ Dorval, and the Timber Manager of North Fork Lumber Company. More importantly, I'm a registered professional forester, something I've been deeply passionate about for my entire 20-year career. I've worked in forests all over Northern California, and these forests are in dire need of help. Active forest management is the only thing that's going to get us out of our problem of overstocked forests and increased fuel loading. To do that, we have to have facilities to take that material to, to have a measurable impact on that. That, on top of all of the economic benefits that these facilities have for the entire area, Madison did a fantastic job of outlining all of the numbers and statistics that active forest management and facilities bring to communities. But the biggest thing for us are the communities. Our owner, our owners are wonderful, wonderful people, as Dee Sanders stated there. From here to Willets, we care about the communities that we work in. We care about the watersheds, we care about the wildlife. I'm a steward of the land as a registered professional forester, that's in my job description. And our communities are what's, why we, a big part of why we do this. We have communities up north around our sawmills that we're actively supporting. In Weaverville, it's an entire town that the mill supports. Here, we want to do the exact same thing. We want to be good neighbors, good stewards of the land, and a big, a big part of this community. And so, to you all, we want you to know that all of these things are important. They're all drivers. We're looking to source logs for our operations, but it is so, such a big picture for active forest management needs that our landowners in Willets, our landowners in Mendocino County, Lake, Sonoma, Napa Counties, they all need places to take their raw materials.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Victor, your boss called you up.
Mr. Mayor and councilmen, my name is Victor Hollister. I'm a log procurement manager at the Willetts Log Yard, and I just would like to really emphasize the few items that Dee and Russ Dorval mentioned, and also Madison did a wonderful job of summing up the benefits that this project proposes. There, you know, like, there have been some comments about some potential impacts to the surrounding areas and the native wetlands. We propose on saving as much of the wetlands as we possibly can, because we know there are beneficial uses to those. But I'd just like to emphasize that this log yard project is not just going to, you know, positively affect the town of Willets, but the whole communities going all the way even down into Santa Cruz, where people are shipping logs from Santa Cruz, Napa, Sonoma County, Southern Trinity Counties into Willets. And North Fork Lumber Company, just in the couple of years it has been here, has pumped over $100 million into the local community around here. So, and we would like to expand on the contribution that North Fork Lumber Company has provided to the communities around here. So, those are just some comments I have, and I'd like you to think thoroughly about this project and support it.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this project? Oh, I'm sorry. You can, Dee. You're the applicant.
Just a couple of clarifications. I know that the ponds that were referenced regarding the management of that water system there in the log yard and watering logs, we do water logs to keep them environmentally the same, environment, steady, so they don't check, they don't deteriorate. We do that in all our log yards around Northern California. The use of ponds to recirculate is just common. It's not new. We do that in every log yard we have. We water, we catch the water. We gotta obviously live within our water quality permits, and we circulate that water back around. So, we use, we've worked on a water supply there, because we've understood, you know, we've been in that log yard seven years. There's a log yard before, by the way, and it is an industrial piece of ground next to the high school, already zoned that way. We have worked diligently and spent a lot of money trying to develop a well system there, and they're not deep wells, and a tank system to be able to try to, so we can keep some water on the logs, because obviously it gets hot in Willets. It's a long summer. This worked somewhat. I'd say, you know, not, it's not everything I'd dream it to be, but I think if you look back at this last summer, and Victor can correct me this if I'm wrong here, but I think we had some problems there with our wells and our tanks for about a week and a half, but that's basically the only city water we've used all year. So, we understand the city's water issues, and we have no intention of trying to live off the city's water. So, glad to answer any other questions that the council might have.
How many new employees, if this passed, how many new employees would you see being brought to Willets?
Well, we already have, basically. Well, we already have basically, you know, five there now, both Six, Con, Victor, locally. It probably wouldn't create a lot more employees, Mr. Chair, Mayor, because we run an existing log there. We just struggle with enough room there to be able to put all the logs we need and to develop that, and it wouldn't, it's not like the existing log yard that we lease from the Budulas would not get used. You know, we continue to use that, but we wouldn't deck as many logs on that particular side as we would on the new zoning pieces, but we still use that log yard releasing as a part of our operation to deck logs and unload logs.
And with the exception of coming off Highway 20, all the other log trucks would, I'm assuming, would use in North Willets off-ramp and knock me downtown and going in front of the high school?
That's correct. Logs coming from the south and logs coming from the north are all going to use that North Willets off-ramp going to the log yard. Coming across Highway 20, they're going to use the town of Willets one way or the other. They're either going to go south in the middle of Willets, or they're going to go north. And that's not going to, it's not going to be affected by what we do.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments? Public comments? I'm going to close. Public comment is closed to the council.
I'm very concerned with the water, fire suppression of this log deck. In the literature that I got, it said it's 50 to 60 incoming logging trucks per day that comes into it. And typically, the bark material is typically, typically two to five loads of, per week that go out. The problem to me, and they've already had one log, the bark fire this year, and it was put out, and the fire department put it out, and I'm just very concerned, I mean, that's my big concern about the whole thing, is the fire suppression. And the wells, and this gentleman that knew what he was talking about obviously said that they're shallow wells. I'm wondering what that does with the rest of the community with the water table that we used to have in our community. I've been here for some, oh, I don't know how many years, 50 or 60 years, what, I taught school here for a long time, and we used to have a time when you could put a shovel down into your garden and it would be wet, and it doesn't happen anymore. I mean, the water, surface water is gone from our, my area, and I don't live next to the logging deck. I live up on Pine Street. And so I'm really concerned, and I haven't had, I mentioned to the fire department yesterday that, not yesterday, it was the day before yesterday, I think, and I brought this packet. And this packet is what we got to look at, and we got it on Friday, to look at for your, for the, this log yard. And there has been bits and pieces of this said in the public here that we're going to have this, and I'm a for logs and I'm for wood because I was a woodchuck teacher in this school for 35 years. And not all redwood and not all fir, but a lot of hardwoods. But I'm really concerned, and I haven't heard anything from the fire department yet, that they have given the people that own the yard the things that they needed to do to make them satisfied that you had enough suppression things to have it, to take care of it. And I haven't heard anything from the fire department saying that, yes, we have, you know, enough log, or wells, or lakes, or whatever that they have to take care of a fire. And I'm concerned also with the high school, because the high school is fairly close. If we really got something that was, that got out of control, it would really be a terrible thing in my book because it's going to cover a lot of ground in that time. And that's my real concern, is the water and the suppression of the fires in case you would have a fire. And Mickey said that it was a lot of water, but the water to cover the logs and to keep them wet and then go back into this surplus and be pumped out for a fire is part of the idea of what's going to happen if we have a fire here, and you're going to use that water. And I'm concerned also about if, once you tie into the Willets water system, you're going to use a lot of water. And depending upon what type of year that we have, whether we have a drought year or if we have a plentiful year or water, that really makes a difference to all of us that live here. And anyhow, these are my real concerns. And I would like to have, you know, the fire chief come up and give us a little spiel on what, if he thinks that the fire suppression is adequate, or if it needs work, or whatever it needs.
All right. We'll just, Chief, just a minute. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I got just a couple of questions here from Mr. Dooley. Is that all right? The zone change, application to general plan, application was 2201, that's for the year 2022, correct? We just passed the land use element in October of 2024. Can you discuss a little bit about why, like, if they knew this was going to happen, why didn't we put that into the land use element we just passed in October? Or is this part of the normal process, or can you just share?
Yeah, no, fair question. Yeah, so, yes, this application was submitted in 2022. You know, work occurred on the land use element uplay, including the update of the zoning map and the general plan map subsequent to that. The reason that this was not folded into that analysis was we were completing that project using three different grant funds. You can see the extensive environmental work that went into that individual project. I don't know what that cost was that was borne by the applicant, but part of the reason was it would have pushed us out of budget trying to analyze that individual request when it was already moving forward on its own. It also wasn't clear that it was a project that, when you, when meeting with council, essentially the previous council, they had established a number of goals to accomplish with that land use element. A lot of it was related to housing and jobs. And this project, although we couldn't afford to really analyze it under the budget we had anyways, it wasn't clear that it met those individual goals either.
That's fair. I appreciate you sharing that. The, it says in the year summary report that this initial, you know, MND was circulated for public view in June and July of this, this year. Could you describe a little bit more about what that means when it says public view? I mean, and obviously there's legal ramifications we have to tell everybody, but what does that mean, public view? Did we have workshops on that? Did we alert the public? How did that unfold?
Yeah, no, again, again, good question. So when you complete an initial study of mitigated neg deck, you have to circulate it for public review, and what that involves is posting it on, it's not OPR, they changed their name, but the state CEQA portal. So it gets posted on there, and then agencies get notified, like CDFW responsible agencies, and then they're given 30 days to provide comments. So those dates you referenced, I believe, were that 30-day period. That's, it's also, that notice is published in the local paper as well, but there isn't a notice that goes out to individual landowners.
Okay. On the, on the report itself, it says that this was completed in May 2025, so that jives, but it also says revised in September. So what revisions took place in September, after the public meetings and after all the notices?
Yeah, so there, so the public draft was circulated per the, what I just mentioned. The Department of Fish and Wildlife did not respond, provide comments to the environmental document within that timeframe, but understanding that their comments and concerns were important to the project, we met with CDFW staff along with the applicant and Laco staff at the site, understood what their concerns were, and then subsequent to that site view, received an email or letter noting their concerns. That's addressed in the initial study, and the initial study includes essentially just clarification to the project description throughout the initial study to satisfy CDFW's comments. So that led to revisions of the public draft of the initial study, and that's why you see a revised date of September on there.
And it wasn't new information? It wasn't?
There, there were no new impacts identified based on CDFW comments. There was not a need to recirculate the document at that point.
Okay. And then another question I have is it states here that the boundary line adjustment is not before the council, we're not dealing with the boundary line adjustment at this time. Could you share why that is? Is that a normal process? Isn't that normally done at the same time?
Yeah, thank you. Another good question. So boundary line adjustments are approved administratively at the staff level and then are appealable to the city council. In this situation, the boundary line adjustment is very much related and relies on the approval of the general plan amendment and rezone. So the fact that they're maintaining a portion of the property as commercial through a boundary line adjustment, it felt relevant to include that information in the report and everything, but the boundary line adjustment itself is not subject to council approval and therefore is not part of the decision tonight. What staff would anticipate is should the rezone general plan be approved, that the applicant then would submit, subsequently submit a boundary line adjustment to staff, and then we would look at it based on, provided a boundary line adjustment's consistent with city applicable standards, we're in a position to approve those.
Excellent. Thank you. I have just one more matter of clarity. I believe you had said when you were making your presentation that, you know, again, what's before the council right now is the zoning, right? But this is, just approving the zoning does not greenlight everything they plan on doing for the next, their whole plan, right? I mean, if there's an issue about water, there's an issue about fire suppression, but all of those type of issues will continue to be discussed, debated, appealed, and discussed publicly at the next phase of this.
A little bit of clarification there. So, yes, tonight, what's before you is the general plan amendment and rezone to go from commercial to industrial. That will then make the applicant eligible to submit a site plan review permit to the community development department to allow for the expansion of the log yard. As part of that project, there's no public hearings, it's approved administratively, but it allows staff to place the mitigation measures that were identified in the rezone as well as some of those housekeeping measures, like tracking the dust off, making sure the vehicles, you know, ingressing, ingress off of the northern interchange, that any queuing of traffic happens within the property boundaries and not out on Main Street. You know, those other types of, of conditions that I've been discussing with the applicant should this project move forward. And again, recognizing the situation, staff is happy to share that with the neighbors because, and it could be that the applicant themselves is not satisfied with the conditions that are placed on the project through the site plan review process. They can appeal that to the city council. The neighbors, the community may not be satisfied with the conditions being appropriate to fully protect the public safety, health, and welfare, and then they can appeal the director's decision to the council as well. And in that situation, there would be a public hearing, but absent that appeal, there would not be a public hearing. And I'll also note that that site plan review permit is revocable. So if we have issues where there, you know, fire suppression's not being maintained, you know, we have those documented situations, I would hope to not expect that, but I'll just note that, you know, that site plan review permit is revocable.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir.
All right. Fire chief. Sir, you, you heard the concerns and hopefully you can address them?
Yeah.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you for having me. I think Dusty kind of answered a lot of the questions regarding the fire suppression system. I know we have any contact with the log yard as they move forward with this project. As Dusty said, as it does move forward, they'll be submitting a set of plans regarding fire suppression, and then we'll put that against the uniform fire code, and we'll make sure the public health and safety of the citizens of Willets is ensured and protected. And then that would be my responsibility at that point. There's been some concerns, maybe from past fire chiefs regarding the current log deck yard, maybe inadequate water supply at this point, but I'm not sure that's kind of what we're hammering out here right now. I think we're just moving to either approve if the city of Willets is going to rezone it or not, and if they do, again, they'll be submitting some, some plans with some fire suppression mitigation, and we'll, you know, we'll see what they have for the suppression. So, yeah. We did, as Stransky mentioned, a couple of bark pile fires, it sounds like moving forward again. Mitigation on some bark pile management would be enforced. We did have some fires there. The crew of the log yard did assist with their heavy equipment, pulling those apart and allowing this for suppression, so.
All right. Thank you. Do you have any more questions for the fire chief? You have any questions? Thank you, chief. Thank you. We've heard the fire chief, and we've heard the councilman. I'm going to do one more bite of the apple. Is there anybody who has a public comment who hasn't spoken yet?
Lady in the jacket.
No? Lady in the jacket.
Lady in the jacket, back in the back.
No, she's already, she's spoken. All right. No, all right, to the council. I, I.
Mayor, I'm sorry. The gentleman from Laco would like to say something.
Kevin? Okay?
Thank you.
So Kevin, I gave the opposition two minutes extra. I'm going to give you two minutes.
Okay. Thank you. It will be less than two minutes. I just want to, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I just wanted to kind of articulate to Mr. Stransky and the rest of the council, the process that we would be going forward after the decision tonight, hopefully is to move forward with the rezone. We will be preparing detailed plans, storage plans, water, fire suppression plans, supported by calculations and design documentation that will have to go to the fire department. The fire department will use their technical consultants to review those plans. The project doesn't get built unless those are approved and they meet all the required fire codes. There's also a provision to submit a detailed bark management plan as part of this, this application, in addition, an emergency action plan. So there are additional belts and suspenders on top of just going to the fire department and submitting the calculations and the design documentation. There are also plans that will be provided to the city that will be enforceable, as Director Dooley said, and I believe that concludes my comments. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So in front of us tonight is a rezoning. It's not the.
I understand.
It's not the plan itself. I've spent time, I've walked this land, I've looked at where this land is, reference to the high school. It's certainly, I know that we had one speaker, I think it was Alan spoke, of there's other places in the town we could do it, but in the whole world of safety. do it. But in the whole world of safety, I think this is in a the let the less traveled zone of Willets with log trucks using the north interchange. I personally support this. I believe that four years has gone into it. And while we've received a letter stating that it was postmarked the 18th and received on the 29th, it was put in the newspaper appropriately legally. And it says it was received the 29th, and I know there might be a calculation error, but I go September 29th, 30th, October 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and today's 8. Today's the 8th, and that's that's 10. I know you may say it's 10 days before or whatever, but I I believe that the good faith of the city to legally be able to vote on this has we've taken the correct steps to do this. We've spoken of this publicly several times at city council meetings and so forth. So I'm prepared to vote on it.
Do we need to make a motion?
We'll need a motion.
Oh, I can make a motion that we adopt a resolution adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program.
I second that.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
All in need?
Yes. Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment number JP A 2201 and zone change ZC 22 stroke 01.
There's two. There's two motions.
Okay.
So he's made a motion.
Yes, I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. To the clerk.
Councilmember Stransky?
Yes.
All in need?
Yes.
All in.
Yes. So to the public, we've approved we've approved the rezoning. And this does not does not mean that the log deck has been approved yet. There's still lots of steps. I would encourage interested parties to please make sure they they read the agendas that come out, they attend city council meetings, and voice your opinions to city council people. That's that's what democracy is all about. So no hard no harm feelings or no hurt feelings. If you came here for this agenda item, it will not hurt our feelings at all if you want to leave now. Now it's hot in the light.
How come everybody's leaving?
You would say this would hurt your feelings.
We're almost done. City councilman, city council announcements, communications, and reports. Oh, wait, let's get Bruce in here and Rod. No, let's get Bruce in here. Oh, no, that's right. Okay. We have Manny.
Okay, wait, Colonel Bruce and Rod get here. Hey, take it outside.
It's all of his money, stop here.
Take him outside. Sorry, you guys need to take it outside. Sorry. Okay. Item number nine, Bees and Boy, report from finance of activity from the director presenting member. Manny, go ahead.
So this is just a brief update of what's been going on with the finance department and after the budget has been passed. So the status of the 2324 audit, the conversation I had with Ben is his review in the work papers, and we'll make a couple of requests in order to be able to get some more documentations. When he gives that to us, then we will get that documentation out to him.
So I'm sorry, that noise is still there. So can you you got the documentation from who?
We no, he's reviewing work papers right now, and he's going to make a couple of requests on some documentation behind the work papers.
We're talking about the audit for
The audit for 2324.
2324.
Yes.
Okay.
So once he gives us the request for documentation, we will provide them as quickly as we possibly can.
So what is the timeframe on that?
Right now, he's pulling it together. He hasn't given me an exact timeframe, probably within a week is what he said. So I'm waiting on that for right now. In the meantime, we're moving forward with closing the current fiscal year 2425. So we're going through a lot of journal entries right now. Bank reconciliations are driving most of them. We're at May of 2025 with 191 journal entries left to go. That'll then spur on our allocations and scrubbing for account activities such as accruals and capital projects, funding them, all the other things that go on within a year and close. We should be ready by the time they finish the audit over in 2425. I'm sorry, 2324 for 2324. So
It'll be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it'll be a couple of weeks when we're ready for the 2425. When they complete 2324, we'll have to do with when they give us the documentation. And then afterwards, we we provide it, which we'll provide as quickly as we possibly can, and then move forward with doing the MDA and the financials.
Doing the what?
Management discussion and analysis.
Okay. So our next council meeting is October 22nd.
And I will keep you apprised.
No, that's not my question.
Oh.
My question is getting every you said it's going to take another week to get everything in for the 2324 budget, right?
Yes.
Can we please make sure that they know, you know, we know, everyone knows, that there's a high expectation that on October 22nd, we're going to be told they have everything and they're working on it? I don't want to rush the process, but we'd like to have kind of date specific of when we can be told that they have everything and they're working on it. Is that a reasonable request?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything more to your report?
The next steps is bank reconciliations for this particular fiscal year. We want to do the deposits and the processes developing a monthly cash report and a CIP reconciliation. So those are things that we're going to be wanting to pull together for you guys in order to be able to have it at around sometime around December 2025, December of this year. So that you'll be receiving monthly cash reports on what we have available.
Through the new computer program.
New computer program.
Right.
Additionally, we just did preliminary runs on what we have currently and our our payroll so far for the general ledger. We have for the first quarter of the year, 1.313 million in expenses. And and with that, we have an additional amount of UAL for the rest of the remaining year of 563,000 that we can expect. And then workers comp and about 185,000 remaining. And with that, it should the projected total, given the current amount that we had, because some of the some of the expenses were one-time expenses associated with positions leaving, it's about 55,000. We have a projected outcome of approximately $3 million remaining in projected costs for for payroll with the current staffing salary that we have that are active within the city right now. And that could change by about up to 400,000, 430,000 if when we do some actions and everything like that for compensated absences.
Does that include the major K transfer?
That does not. That's just
Just expenses.
General fund expenses. This is only expenses for payroll. And that's just my first report on that.
Can you tell me whether the what our cash balance
As of right now?
Cash balance right now is?
3 million, 45,000.
And have we converted any securities or any?
We have not. Some securities have matured. We have about 2.7 million dollars available in funding from our CD investments that are liquid cash right now, sitting at the bank. And that could be transferred over and may, I should say, there's a possibility that we may have to transfer some over if certain bills need to be paid within a shorter period of time. Right now, we're looking at a timeframe of about December to January for the Sizerco contracts. And as for Rails with Trails, we have a invoice for bridges that are coming that's coming to the pipelines right now. So between that payroll, paying off the Sizerco, it could potentially lead us in order to be able to either need the use of those CD investments. However, we'll try and minimize that as as low as possible, or or we'll utilize funding that would be coming from other sources if we're able to acquire a revolving loan.
But we'd be notified before that happened.
Yes. And I'm notifying you right now that there's potential to happen. We don't know yet because cash flow wise, we're going to try and stave off being able to do that. And so I will make a notification to you guys before we ever do that.
Is the 2.7 that is still in securities or CDs or LEAF, is that the final savings account for the city that
No.
Is that money plus the 3 million account for the total cash?
There's also about 500,000 left in LEAF.
So then there's another 500,000 in LEAF.
So you're looking at close to about close to 900,000 remaining. 900 million, sorry. 9 million.
I don't know. 2.7 plus 3045 and 500 don't add up to 9.
2.7.
Property taxes will be here.
Was it 3?
3.045, you said.
045. And then what's actively tied into securities at the moment brings the 2.7 up to 5.25, if I remember correctly.
Well, I asked you what the total
I'm telling you what liquid is. What I said was liquid at the moment. If we had to tap into the remaining balance of what was still tied in CDs, then we would have a penalty associated with that.
So we'd be cashing CDs early, but there's another 3 million dollars.
There's another 3 million dollars that are actively engaged in CDs.
Okay. And when do we get our next installment of property taxes?
That should be
How much?
End of December, early January, and approximately 2 to 2.3 million.
Well, not from property tax because the
That'll be that'll be property tax and also the sewer sewer assessment really.
Understood. But property tax only brings in 500,000 dollars a year.
The rest goes to the
So that you divide that to it's 250.
I think most of the driving factor to needing the funding is for sewer, for the Sizerco contracts. The remaining values are going to be the driving factors for those are the Rails with Trails, and we have been getting our reimbursements back relatively quickly.
So what what are the accounts receivable and accounts payable in the rail trail right now?
Now, I will leave that to Dusty to answer. Can I reframe the question to make sure I understand it?
So I want to know what the the receivables are and what the payables are.
Give me one second. So we still have one outstanding invoice that's been sent to Coastal Conservancy for reimbursement. This is specifically for the bridges, and it's an invoice for 684,213.75. My understanding is all other requests for reimbursement through either the Caltrans grant or the state coastal conservancy grant have been reimbursed.
So that's our accounts receivable. That's what the state owes us now is the 689,000?
684,213.75. That's my understanding.
And we have an invoice from the contractor, obviously, for 684,000 to it. Or have we paid it?
No, we still haven't paid it yet. We just received it.
And that's the only present outstanding invoice from the contractor?
That's not a warrant.
Doesn't have labor other? I mean, if that's the invoice for the bridges, you'd think there'd be
We caught up on all of the other ones that he submitted to us.
Yeah. There was another invoice for labor. I think that invoice that we're talking about was specifically for purchase of the bridges.
That was specifically
And there was another invoice for 200 and something that was labor, and that got reimbursed by Caltrans already. Yeah.
So the 684 is for materials.
Just specific
And verify that they're on site, correct?
Correct.
Per our discussion?
Correct.
So once they're on site, you can pay for materials and get reimbursed.
And October 15th is the date where major work stops. I mean, they'll still do minor work.
No.
October 30th, the permit allows it till the end of October, and that's in the creek areas. He'll still be able to do work outside of that. There's paving work and other light letting works you can continue on. He cannot work in creek beds.
I see. Okay.
And the weapons, yes.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
Weather permitting, correct.
Are there anything else, Manny?
That concludes me.
Bruce?
Hi, can I ask a clarifying question, Manny? Because you said the number that I was curious about. 1.3 million, you said, is the is salaries paid against out of the general fund only, correct?
Yeah, out of the general fund.
Okay, I didn't quite hear that. So and then another 3 million plus or minus 400,000, which is potentially up to 4.7 million in salaries.
Yeah, that's that's
Salaries alone?
Wait, 7 what? Sorry.
If you add 3 to 3 million to 1.3 million, and then potentially another 400,000, if that's our
4.3
Could be up to 4.7 million in in salaries only.
And salaries and benefits.
Yeah, 553 in benefits on top of the 1.3.
Yeah, 553 for UAL.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah.
So it'd be 5. So right now, with 12 empty positions, we're potentially on pace to be at 5.2 million dollars in salaries, benefits, and unfunded liability.
I have 5.088.
Without the positions, without the vacant positions with itself.
So that tracks online with what Andy said about the vacant positions being about 750,000. And with the two positions that were that have left, that created a, you know, one-time cost that kind of bolstered that 1.3, the remaining value of average payroll for the general fund side has been about 1.5, sorry, 150,000 per day.
Well, based on this discussion, it sounds like we're pushing closer to 6 million than than 5 and a half. With that 700,000, if we were to include that 700,000, like fully loaded. So I'm just I'm just trying to trying to follow the math here.
No, no, no. What the math is, is that what the actual costs are today, and then what the actual cost with our current staffing.
Right. So you forecasting, I mean, I'm saying it could be 5.3 based on what you said, and then you're saying 5 million 88.
Yeah.
And there's 700,000 in those positions that are not filled.
No, 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 this is
This is just actuals.
No, no, no. I got it. I got it.
Okay.
I got it. I'm saying I'm saying like if we're pretending this is the budget, and we're going to look at actuals, if had those positions been filled, that additional 700,000 would have pushed the total expense closer to 6 million than 5 and a half.
Yeah, but we're not filling them. But yeah.
I know. We're going through another budget budget exercise. You talk about
I'm just talking.
Right. So what it what it what it speaks to directly is the significance of the change, the significance of the changes kind of are varying a little bit by up to half a million dollars, which is not not a good position to be in, given the financial financial issues the city's facing.
Same. You can't you can't subtract the 700,000 from the 5.2 million. It ain't in there.
That's with
That's right.
So
If you add it
So we really are close to a $7 million general fund budget with its other costs, you know, that we got we got an $800,000 insurance bill. So I mean, you're going to get to 700, 7 million in the general fund without sneezing. All right, anything more, Bruce?
No. Well, I did. I mean, yeah, on the financial deal, when Walter makes his report, I got a question or two for him.
Go ahead, and then we're going to Larry. Go.
Oh.
Any more for financial?
No.
Okay. Okay, Larry, anything for Manny?
No.
No? Okay, thank you very much, all right. Is there any public comment on the finance report? Concluding public comment. All right, so now we're gonna go to city council announcement, communications and report. Bruce?
I, I just have a question of, I guess, of Jim. The public comment introduction is like three paragraphs long now. Is that by statute that it's ended up, in all the years I was mayor, I could get by with two sentences? I think it's an awkward and kind of presumptively rude thing to even.
I think it's promo the last couple of years, if it was briefer in years past.
Can we make?
Probably those could answer how that occurred.
I believe it's, it's a standard for all city councils to have that.
No, not the board of supervisors, they don't go through all that.
I, I would just suggest we see if we can shorten that.
I'll reach out to the other city clerks and see if they have any short.
Does it have to be read?
I, I think it does have, I think it does.
It does need to be read out loud.
But.
Well, there's this, a sentence or two about, we're not gonna permit certain types of harassment or behavior.
I mean, I memorized it and I can tell you what I said for 20 years.
Yeah.
And it wasn't all that.
It's a lot, yeah. It's kind of presumptive, like.
Anyway.
Zooming up a fight every week.
I will, I will look at past city council agendas or council agenda packets and send it to one of my close friends that works in the city of Sacramento and see if that will suffice.
See if we can shorten.
All right, anything more, Bruce?
I guess, I, I did wanna ask Walter, if Walter, is he, he's not making a report tonight or we already went through that?
No, we don't have a report. So, but I mean, is there something that's.
Well, I'm just curious, on, on the, the bridges and the permits in the creek, did that all get squared away, the permits are, they can go ahead and work in the creek and?
No, but only until the end of October, that's just because of the.
I understand that, but.
Yeah. Oh, everything else.
Three weeks ago, they didn't have the permit to.
Yes, we, we are able to do some of the work, we were cleared and stuff by the state and everything, yes, we've gotten through all of that, yes.
So what are the?
We can proceed, yes.
Fish and game, all that stuff?
Yeah, they just actually met today, they were out there today, again with the contractor and our staff today, and they are good on everything and stuff, yes, we're moving ahead on that.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
Anything more? Larry, anything to report?
Dusty, no more of these, things for the, for the budget ending for the.
What's he supposed to do?
I know, I have to include it, Larry. I, this, I tried to summarize it in the staff report, a lot of bullets. But you're noted, thank you.
Yeah, I went to a in-poll meeting on Monday.
Thank you.
And, yeah, it's good stuff, I really love it, yeah, I go to here, I'm sick, I know. But they did note, they did notify us that the California is legislation is working on securing an additional 50 million specifically for the rails for trails program, and 41 million of that is to help the cities finish the males for trails project. So, but we, they're still working out the, you know, the, that's still the legislative process, and we still have to apply, if we, if we have a cost overrun, we need to get some of that money back. It does look optimistic that if there's a cost overrun, that we would be able to get some refund off that, even though it's over the 9 million, so that's, that's good news.
You know, on that point, if I can just elaborate slightly, that the rail trail ownership of, of the city's property, or the property through the city of Willets is probably the biggest fire hazard in the community. And what is north of Commercial Street between here and the city limits is a giant brush field. And with the, with all the attendant problems and hiding places that that creates, and I really think the city should take a, a look at, at, you know, NCR8 avoided responsibility for taking care of their property for 20 years and the NCR, in the rail trail, people seem to have advanced that to another level of art, but I think the city needs to send a terse letter to start with to them regarding the abatement. We wouldn't let any other landowner in the city create a fire hazard like that in the community.
Our representative to the Great Redwood Trail Agency is Ashack, so we'll talk to him soon about doing such as that, because he's equally concerned about the fire.
Well, that would be a fair item, agenda item to have.
Yeah.
And. Larry, that's not gonna work. That's not gonna fit in there. Anyway, it'd be a fair item. I do wanna say this for the rail, that if you haven't noticed, all of those junk cars down there that were north of the scum train are gone.
Well, they're down here in the front.
No, they're not. I've seen, I've watched them on big rigs, heading south now 101. And.
Are the ones out down here?
No, we still have some engines.
Those are owned by several other owners there, some of those belong to the scum train, some of those are still going, but several of them were abated and recycled and taken out and everything, so.
Yeah, they're gone.
Several of them burned.
Yeah, no, they were people, there were people starting fires and.
Yeah, on the inside, but I mean, you can't burn wheels.
Um, I just have to say, the 1.6 miles of trail that are being worked on right now through the city, that was cleared and masticated and cleared out for fire hazard and stuff. So our section of trail is actually in.
Oh, no, down here.
Right, I know about the north section.
Talking about a few.
That is gonna be going out to bid, I think, in the next year for the next 13 miles, and I think they're gonna include abatement through there and stuff and clearing it out as part of that project. But that's not in our, that won't be, we won't be participating in that, that's a whole separate thing.
I'm just saying. All right, is there anything more for the betterment of the city?
Uh, we have a finance meeting coming up on the 15th.
We do?
We do, I'm sorry, we, we still have a 15th, but, well, a finance meeting on the 15th at 3:30.
At, at October what?
15, 15, Wednesday.
At 3:30?
3:30, right here.
Thank you.
Anything more? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.